Welcome, everybody in my life. Yep, I'm on. This is the regular city council meeting of Monday, March 15th, 2021. Will you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Maybe seated. All right, welcome, everybody. Do I have a... Do I have any public comments? Did she get numb? Okay. Not today. Okay, first, we have a special presentation, Retail Strategies, from Jeff Summer. Jeff, you want to step up?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you very much for having us. Jeff Summer.
Drew Kaufman.
And we are with Retail Strategies. I'm your portfolio director, so...
And I'm your retail development coordinator.
And we manage the relationship, working with you guys and working with Charlie on a regular basis. And I'll speak into the microphones. We all can hear that. For those at home, we'll test my radio voice tonight. But so really, we're here to give you kind of a recap of where we're at to date on our partnership. Some of this is a repeat that Charlie and some of the group has heard, but we really enjoy working with him. He does a great job for you guys, and I've been very, very helpful. So I want to go back a little bit and talk about some of the demographics, some of the findings that we did during the retail recruitment study. And then we'll talk about some of our efforts on your behalf. I know you guys have a long agenda tonight, so I'll try to be quick. But if you have any questions, feel free to chime in, or we can naps them at the end. So again, Drew and I are your main points of contact at Retail Strategies. We're a municipal consulting firm that help towns like you guys recruit retail and bring in restaurants, and we're based in Birmingham, Alabama. Obviously, you guys are looking to bring in more retail, more jobs, quality of life for your citizens, and that's why we exist. There's a lot of challenges, so there's only so many resources and connections that have to be made to bring in retail and brands. It's very competitive, and you guys have made that investment in us. We really appreciate it. The first 100 days of our timeline of our partnership are our discovery phase. This is where we get to know Tika K. We come to the market, we drive the market, we do the demographic studies, we pull all the data, and we really start to study, what does this market look like from the numbers standpoint? When we were here on our Boots on the Ground tour, which Drew will talk about a little bit, we analyzed the real estate assets to understand what sites are available for retail and restaurant development. As of today, I believe we're 264 days in. It's been about five and a half months of recruiting, which in the life cycle of commercial real estate and retail development, that is very small. But we do have a lot of good feelers and outreach out there and interests in the market that I'll go into in a second. So the reason we show this, we want you guys and the public to see that retail builds upon retail. Success builds upon success. Other brands want to be next to their competitors. They want to be right next door to the same type of shop. If it's a burger place or a full-service restaurant, or as you see, these brands here, they build upon each other. So we want to build upon the success of brands that are already here and bring more to the market to strengthen and widen the pie that is available here in town.
And if you could bring us a Whataburger, I'd be a happy guy.
No promises tonight, but we will definitely be pursuing them among many other brands. Obviously, retail is complicated. I know everybody watches the news. We see the headlines. You know, it's a constantly moving target. These brands, they have a criteria that they set out to achieve each year, but that could change. So our job is to stay on top of what's going on with these national brands. There's data overload. There's, you know, new preferences of millennials and Gen Z and all that. So retailers are always trying to capture new customers. There's always a challenge of data versus real estate, and a lot of times, these deals take a long time to close. E-commerce, we've got to talk about e-commerce. Everybody talks about Amazon. They're sort of the ever-present elephant in the room. But we're not afraid of Amazon. We know e-commerce is a large part of retail sales. Obviously, during COVID, it went up significantly to about 15% of retail sales. But we think there is some level of ceiling to that because citizens and consumers still want to go into a store. They want to feel the product, they want to touch the product. And a lot of times, these e-commerce platforms, you may buy it online, but sometimes they want you to return the product in the store, like Kohl's is an example. They, you know, Amazon, if you're able to purchase something there, you can go back to a Kohl's store and return it to them because they know, once you're in there, you may see another product you want to buy. So we're very aware of Amazon and the impact they have on our retail industry. But you also have to have bricks and mortar. Very important to have clicks and bricks, something we always talk about. So when you guys think about Tika K, you probably think about your city limits, which of course, as councilman and the mayor here, you think about, you know, what is our service area? In retail, it's somewhat different. This is how a retailer looks at your market. They want to break it down by incomes, by population density, by miles you traveled to go to your store, the radius rings, and so on. So we're trying to bring people from a large trade area outside of Tika K to shop within Tika K. It's not just your people here on the peninsula. Did I say that right? Is it the right way to phrase it? Okay. Another way to look at your market, we break it down in a lot of different ways, is drive time. So as you see here, you know, the population we're looking at isn't just 10,000. Depending on the drive time, the radius ring, it can be a large population we're talking about. We're also able to show, you know, the annual growth rate, average age, home value. And we have all these figures at our fingertips for you guys to analyze your market and share those with retailers to tell the story of Tika K. One thing we have that's really interesting is the mobile data collection. I know all of us have cell phones in here, and one example of this data collection is if you're looking at the weather app, a lot of times, they have the location services running in the background. Well, there's companies out there that will buy that data and kind of track where you're going. That's not us. We're not tracking your comings and goings, but we do use that data to understand trade areas. So I believe this actually was run, this looks like it's from the golf club. So what they do is we run this for about a year's time period, and we try to understand where people's home locations are as they come to and from their home to the place. For this example was the golf club. Usually, it's a Walmart or a large drawer of traffic, but it's just another way to prove a trade area. If we're talking to a retailer that's based in Nashville or Chicago, and we're talking about the trade area of Tika K, we say, hey, we have 70,000 people within a certain amount of mileage. They say, well, prove that to me. We can pull up mobile data and say, these are the home locations that people are coming to and from to buy things in Tika K. Really cool technology. So within that trade area we just looked at, there's about 76,000 people, which is a really strong number when we go to talk to national brands about the market. We're able to show the projected growth rate. Obviously, being south of Charlotte, we're in a very strong area. Your economy here is very strong. You guys see it every day. So this is a great area for retail. As we know, retail follows rooftops, and there's a lot of folks moving into this MSA. One of our ways to analyze a market is by looking at the peer analysis. And I don't have the list of cities on, because I deleted that slide just because to cut down on what we're presenting to you. But basically, what it does is we have a list of anywhere from five to 10 cities that we see as peer cities to Tika K. This study says, what is in those cities that is not in Tika K? And it breaks it down by category, whether it's clothing, full-service restaurants, hardware, shoe stores. And again, that helps us understand, what do our peer cities have that Tika K doesn't have that we can now go after and try to recruit them to this market? So I'll turn it over to Drew for a couple minutes here.
Building, yeah, I need to move this up a little bit. Building off what Jeff has been saying, when we started working here this summer, we drove to K and wanted to figure out where the home run sites were. What could we pitch to the retailers that makes sense based off acreage, traffic counts? Everybody wants to be off 160, and that's some of the things we'll talk about. And so this is what Tika K looks like in the city limits. And throughout this aerial, we've figured out the focus points. And so those are those green dots you see. These are home run sites. A lot of them are by the Walmart, then up into the elementary school, and then by the Harris Teeter site.
And we keep track of these sites annually. We update them. We obviously know that some will be bought and sold. Some are actually, I think City Hall is on here, actually. But we just saw it as what could be a potential opportunity for development, you know, one, two, three years down the road. We're not saying this is the end-all, be-all list. It's more of what is potential in the market, and this will change, and we update it each year.
It's available.
Okay.
And so this is the retail timeline. So it starts with investors and Wall Street, how many stores they have to open if they're publicly traded. And then the real estate director gets involved with a local tenant rep that they pay for, and he brings them deals. They identify the markets, which goes into them saying, we want to be in Tika K. Okay, well, we're in Tika K. And then that's where you identify a site, which we help with. And then the tenant rep presents the site to the real estate director. And then they run a pro forma. What's the rent? What's the construction going to cost? All this factors in, and it gives them a ROI. And if the ROI is not high enough, there's no deal. And then, once they get through that pro forma and it makes sense, they give a letter of intent. Letter of intent is pretty much, Jeff says it best, but I want to dance with you, but I'm not ready to marry you. And so we'll get to that, though. And the real estate committee will look at it, and they either approve it or they don't. And then you get a lease. And then, once that lease is signed, you're married, and then a developer comes in, and then there's an opening date, and the city has a ribbon cutting.
And the reason we want to show this to you guys is, obviously, we want to get as many wins for Tika K as possible. We want to get it yesterday. But there's a real-world economic cycle out there and lifecycle to these deals where there's a lot of lawyers involved in these things. There's architects, engineers, there's different steps, there's landowners. Sometimes landowners think they're sitting on gold. And that's no offense to them, but it's not always worth what they think it is, so...
Every landowner thinks there's gold under their site.
And that's fine, and that's not in Tika K. That's any market. So there's a lot of steps in this process to getting a deal done. And really, the retailer, they drive the decision. They hold all the cards. They know where they want to be. And the reason you're working with us is because we're putting Tika K in front of them and trying to inject you guys and your sites into this process. It's all about profit, as you know, the private sector.
So here are some things that we saw before COVID and when COVID hit and during COVID, what, how it affected restaurants and retail. Biggest ones growing are essential businesses. What's essential to you guys? Obviously, you got to eat. You're going to the grocery store. General merchandise is always a good topic. Home improvement. A lot of people during COVID took to building decks, and they kind of, you know, got another hobby because you're going to be at home all day. And then pet supplies. People bought animals, and, you know, were always buying dog food. The ones that got kind of, you know, hurt and were struggling were the restaurants. You know, COVID limited them to not having their full capacity. And then the clothing and accessories. Clothing was already dying. It's no shock there. But one of the biggest things was how they're going to have to make a market correction to the consumer with the online platform. And we touched earlier on e-commerce. People that didn't have an e-commerce are now going to have to do that and adapt to the consumer. Furniture as well. And here are some of the brands we've seen that are at risk based off their use and category, and some that have filed for Title 11. Yeah, for bankruptcy.
Yeah, again, I mean, what COVID did is that it really accelerated changes that were already happening in the marketplace. We think about Sears. We think about some of the stores we go to where there's product everywhere, you can't find somebody to help you. The brands were kind of tired. They were kind of old-school brands. They really weren't changing with the times, and COVID just sped them up as far as their closures. Now, we're not here to all talk about doom and gloom. I mean, yes, we all know that retail is challenging, but there are tremendous opportunities right now in brands that are definitely growing.
Yep. There's brands out there that are going to take advantage of that with the big boxes leaving. Goodies went bankrupt, so Burks, Outlets, feeling a bunch of those boxes. And Jeff and I have seen a, almost a 2% sales increase in 2021, pretty much with the vaccine and everything kind of, I want to say it's dying down, but we don't know. That's just kind of what we've seen with the numbers. And then, why are they not already here? Either it's the COVID-19 delays, the market and general economics, what makes a deal work. And also, we've seen a lot of people say their pipeline that was for 2020 got slowed down, COVID in construction. So now it's pushed back into this year, and even some people have said 2022, which is not a bad thing, but it's how can we fit them on their pipe? How can we fit you on their pipeline?
Absolutely.
Here's restaurants that we pretty much have not seen slow down. Waffle House kind of, you know, took a minute there. But surprisingly enough, Texas Roadhouse has been doing deals, and they're a full-service steakhouse.
And I want to stress that the committee has made it clear to us that they want us to go after full-service restaurants, places for families to come to. Maybe they can have a cocktail or a beverage, have a nice dinner, hang out after the ballgame. So we've been given that directive, and we're going after it. So just because you see these brands doesn't mean we're going after all these national brands. It's going to get you all sonic. But we wanted to say that there are brands out there that are growing. But the directive by the committee has been for family entertainment, good restaurant, which is a difficult category, but there are brands that are growing, especially where you guys are in the Charlotte MSA.
A lot of the new prototypes, especially quick-serve restaurants of the world, have been doing new prototypes that are going to be coming out. You'll be seeing. They have four-lane drive-throughs. It's pretty cool. They're going to have a lane for the people who did the mobile app. They're going to have a lane for the people who want to go and talk to someone and order their food. They're going to have a lane for the third parties of the world, DoorDash, Uber Eats. I know I'm missing, there's so many. But all these will be, make it more convenient to the consumer that is going to their restaurant. And here's another prototype with Shake Shack. You can see the app pickup and so forth. And then Chipotle. They've, one of the tenant reps, and I've heard different things, but they'll only look at sites where they can do a drive-through. So some, sometimes, in some circumstances, there'll be a restriction on the land based off who's next to them. This site can't have a drive-through, and Chipotle won't look at it anymore. So staying in the know of what they want and how we can pitch it the best site possible. So the four Ds of real estate, I don't want to be the Grim Reaper of the room, but this is actually a reality. So we kind of lean on the city for this. If you know a property owner that might be going through something or say something happens, a natural disaster, let us know because sometimes they won't sell, and these Ds of the real estate will make them sell.
Again, I know it's kind of a tough thing to talk about, but these are opportunities in our world. And, you know, sometimes the kids don't want to, you know, have the family, the family land or whatever get passed on, and they're ready to sell, and that becomes an opportunity. And so anytime you guys hear of things, please pass along to us. And the team's been great on giving us updates on local properties.
So the universal site metrics, this is kind of like what a retailer glances at immediately at a site plan or a marketing flyer. Visibility is the biggest thing. Their customer has to see their store or they're not going to come in, unless it's a destination retailer, and they're already going there to tan or go to the gym. They already know it's there. And then the parking's a big thing. Every thousand square foot a retailer has, depending on how many square foot they take, they need at least four parking spaces. They want the traffic light. They want the good ingress, egress. That goes back to the access. Cotenancy, they want to be near people that they coexist with. When I used to work for Books-A-Million, our customer was the soccer mom. So we want to be next to the soccer mom stores, the TJX, the Marshalls, the Home Goods. And traffic's the biggest thing as well. They want the VPDs, which is the vehicles per day. Everyone wants to be off 160 because it's insane traffic counts.
So let's talk a bit, we're very fast on kind of recapping overall, you know, what the retail world looks like and what we do on a day-to-day basis. But some of the activity, I know it's very small, and I apologize for that. I did want to show you guys an example of an update that we gave to the committee on people we've been speaking with and the interest we've been garnering on your behalf. Again, we're targeting fast casual, places where you can sit down with your family. Some of these concepts, you do order at the counter, but then you go sit down. They do serve alcohol. Some of them are fitness concepts. We're talking with a sports pub and grill. So again, this is a really big update that we sent to the committee, and I feel like we're getting a lot of good traction. You know, we never promised a win in the first year, but we always are working towards that daily. So again, this is just an example of what our, one of our recaps looks like to the committee. Happy to go into detail offline. Anybody that has questions, talk to you about some brand names. Here's an example of something we got working on pretty quickly. I think you'll recognize a location along Stonecrest. I think pretty quickly, when Drew and I were in the market, we saw this site. Well, we learned that Model A Brewing was coming in across the street. We said, hey, this is a great location. There's apartments that have gone in. There's homes back here. Let's, let's try to get a developer to come in here and put it under contract. And we actually were able to get our sister company, Retail Specialists, to put it under contract. And they started shopping the site to national brand retailers, and we were assisting them in doing that. A lot of the feedback was positive about the market. They liked Tika K. The incomes are very strong. But again, we do more in the national brand retail, and some of the feedback we got was they want to be on 160. Even though we all know that's not very far, the feedback was, I just, I got to be out there on the highway. I got to get those traffic counts. But we were able to get an engineer to do a rendering. We got some valuable intel by going through this contract process. I believe they've since pulled the contract, so the site is now available. They were coming up against a deadline where they had to have money go hard, meaning cash was being put down. So what we're going to do, we're going to shift the developer and try to shop this to other people to really get their interest to tie it up. I think it'd be good for local brands, regional brands, something that complements the brewing company. So we're going to continue to work on that. But that was something we worked on pretty quickly during the partnership. As you see here, this is a site we're looking at that has a lot of, it's caught our interest. It does have some issues. I realize it's technically not the city limits, but again, it's your trade area. It's, it's right outside the city limits, but it's at the corner of your retail man-in-main, essentially. It was priced right, as of today. It's priced right. There is some issues with the, there's a little bit of a low spot where there might be some wetland, and then we may have to work with SCDOT as far as getting permission for a ride, ride-in, turn off 160 there, as well as it's, it's a neighborhood. I think it's zoned residential. So there's some little issues and challenges that we have to work through. But as far as if you're looking for a spot in Tika K on 160, that's one that's really close to your city limits. We're going to try to pursue that. Again, it does have some challenges, but we immediately thought, let's, let's give it a shot. Let's try to go, go get some interest on the site. And with that said, you'll see here in a second, the national brands we've been talking with, we have now, we're going to try to put this in front of them, say, hey, you told us you wanted to be on 160. Let's see if we can make this happen. Let's, let's get somebody in here to go on 160. Again, there's some details we have to work out, so. Want to talk about this?
Yeah. So I do a lot of the virtual shows where I put Tika K on the map. Last time, it was Curry Up Now, which is an Indian fast casual. It was really cool. And then Rye Southern Biscuits, they focus more on the breakfast, lunch crowd. You can go pick up, sort of, they have a really cool sort of design where they have a, keep your food in a locker, where you can pick it up so it's contactless, and it keeps your food at 160 degrees. And so they would be really good in Tika K. We're doing another one coming up in May 20th, where we're actually going to Orlando, Florida, where there's, I have a list running. More and more retailers keep going, but it's the TJXs of the world, big boxes, and then your fast casuals and your coffee concepts. And we're going to be putting that site plan that you just saw of 160 and even the Stonecrest Boulevard. I know we don't really, you know, it's back with a different real estate broker right now, but we can still pitch that and maybe get like a full-service restaurant, take the whole thing. And they're going to be at those shows. And then in December 5th through the 7th, we're going to Las Vegas to do the biggest show, which over 40,000 retailers in, it's called Recon in Las Vegas. So got a lot of momentum going there, and we'll be setting up meetings with people. If there's anyone that you want us to meet with in particular, let us know. But it's going to be going off your demographics and who will be a good fit. So more upscale and kind of staying away from the quick-serve restaurants.
And that's it. Any questions? Be glad to go into more detail or answer any questions.
You had our, our population about 9,800, I think. Obviously, we're going through census right now. I think you're going to find it much higher.
Sure.
We've seen as high as 13.5 already. And I think if we take how many houses we have multiplied by the magic 2.8 number in a family, that gets us around 12-something. So if that helps that we have more people than what is available on Wikipedia and all those kind of things.
I'm glad you said that. Yeah. More rooftops is, always helps us in our pitching your markets. That's definitely.
So and also, we've, we spoke to our neighbors all the time, and we don't, and they tell us. They call us and tell us all the time. They're, they're looking for, we're a recreation community. So they're looking for recreation and entertainment at the same time. And entertainment, I guess, can be also be restaurants. People go to restaurants for entertainment. But they've also mentioned movie theaters, bowling alleys. Are bowling alleys even existing anymore? Do they really?
They are. I mean, obviously, the last year was a challenge for both those categories, but...
Is that somebody, something people build anymore? Or they just let the guys who've had it for 40 years just keep upgrading or?
It kind of changed it to where you're not just bowling. It's, you got the bar, you have the arcade games. You have more of a modern bowling alley. And one of the concepts is Bowlaroo, and they just did a deal in Hoover, Alabama, which the demographics aren't as good as Tika K. So there's people out there looking to be places. And what I mentioned earlier, there's big boxes that have left, like the goodies and people that went bankrupt, and those bowling alleys will take advantage of that with the landlord who wants someone paying them rent.
What about the movie theaters?
Yeah, we're seeing a few kind of figure out how to kind of grow again and then come out of the pandemic. Obviously, they were hit hard, but we keep up with those brands. We talk with those guys, so.
Is Netflix going to take over, and they're not going to have any movie theaters anymore?
That's a good question. That's a great question. I think eventually, people, once we get the vaccine going, I mean, people are itching to go out and do things and experience things again. Yes, there's changes. We've seen shifts, and there's changes. But I'm bullish on some of these things coming back, and people getting out there and spending their money, experiencing it with their families. And we're trying to stay on those trends so we can put Tika K in front of those guys.
Yeah, just remember, as you came in, you saw the recreation community of Lake Wyle. That's real big around here with all, we have about every sport you can play around here.
Yeah.
And what, so what do you see as our strengths?
Yeah.
Our demographics, our income levels?
I think so. I mean, I think your incomes are strong, your proximity to Charlotte, being in the MSA and being a, really a strong part of the whole country. You can live in Tika K. You can work and play here. Well, you could play here, and then go maybe work in Charlotte. You don't have to live in downtown. I think your proximity along 160, you know, you're growing. You have been, your assets with Lake Wiley, people want to be near recreation, like you just said.
Well, then what's our weakness, you think? Is our, I know we have proximity to 160, but we're not on 160. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I'd say it's...
We're kind of far back behind it.
There's not, I'd say we have probably a handful of sites that we're like, okay, we really can do something with this. We don't have a dozen sites that we're pitching. It's really kind of, has come down just a handful. So if it doesn't work for those, then that, that can be tough. You're kind of landlocked in a way. Maybe that's not the right phrase. But I, I know there's some efforts going on behind Walmart, and there's been a lot of discussion, some projects going on back there. I know down near the river, there's some recreation you're doing. I think that would be positive.
Big park down there.
Yeah.
That ought to be a big plus.
I would like to see more traffic going down Dam Road to make that really viable, meaning more houses down there, more rooftops, more maybe mixed use, just in order for us to recruit retail to that area for the commercial component. But you have a great community. You have great leadership. You know, we work with a lot of great communities, but I really enjoy pitching Tika K and talking about your market and your site. So we're, I didn't, I didn't have the slide up here that said the number of brands that are interested. But it's a full-service restaurant, like two full-service restaurants like the market. One is kind of a sports, not bar, but more of a grill. And then there's a fast casual, we'll call it, that's more of a lunch, dinner spot. You would recognize it. There's coffee. And there's a few more that are interested in the market. Just got to find the right spot for them, so.
We don't need any more QTs. We got plenty of gas stations.
Yes, won't do that.
Anybody got any questions?
So I think, at least from my perspective, the importance on getting local businesses, especially restaurants in here that are really unique to this area and just have a different vibe or feel than like the Outback or the Longhorn or whatnot. So I don't know how you market those if there's, if they're not at those big, you know, national conferences and things like that. But I think the more that we can do to get some local businesses in this area, the better. So I would just encourage you to do that.
Glad you said that. Because, and that was voiced from Charlie, and the committee was saying, we do want those brands. So part of our, kind of original part of our company, what we do is the national recruitment. But again, we hear from clients that they do want that unique brand, kind of the local feel. So we do have a list of brands that we go after. They may have a location over in Matthews, or they may be in Rock Hill. And that's just sort of, you know, beating the bushes and calling these folks and figure out who the manager is, who the franchisee is, or who just the owner is, and say, I've got space for you in Tika K. Would you want to come here? So we are doing that. We do have a list of some apparel, some coffee restaurants that are kind of in the Charlotte MSA that we are going after. That doesn't have a sort of a formula, like we said with the national brands. They say, I got to open up 20 stores this year. Here's my criteria. We got to do this. Local brands are sort of, I'm open to, open a restaurant. Tell me about a site. So we do that, just a different approach. That's a good question.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just one thing. I mean, when you talk about trip counts and traffic on Dam Road and Stonecrest, once that park is open and we start bringing in tournaments and things of that nature, both of those streets are, the traffic counts are gonna increase quite a bit. We heard from the people that were, are developing that property, you know, about trip counts. And yeah, everybody does want to be on 160. But if there's a destination, you know, they will come. We just feel like, once something starts there, then the dominoes will start to fall. And I know that's what I'm looking for.
Sure, sure.
Any comments? Charlie, any comments from you or anybody? No? Okay. Well, thanks.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, nothing for item two. Item three is approval minutes. Counsel, you've got the special meeting and the regular meeting minutes. Any additions, subtractions, or deletions? Seeing none, hearing none, stands as published. Item number four is committee appointments. Back to Charlie for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I've got your nominees here for council to approve. I'll go through, excuse me, I'll go through and read each committee and the names for it. And that way you can cover it with one motion, one vote at the end. Board of zoning appeals, one unfulfilled term vacancy, and that would, your nominee here is Maureen Hertick. Building codes, Todd Baker, Randy Minnick, and Mike Long. Economic Development Commission, Malobi Achike, Jeffrey Adams, Sarah Ruffalo, Leroy Denton. Planning Commission, Jason Pitcock, Michelle Nance, and Jessica O'Connor. Stormwater, Crystal Good, Ty Holderbaum, and Tina Woodward. And Tugak Forever, Laura Saunders, Gregory Werner, Josephine Burnson, Ben Ullman, and Calla Wilcox. And those are your nominees for those committees.
All right. Any questions on those? So for the nominees, are we just doing a simple vote?
Motion to approve is read.
You want to make a move?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the stated nominees for the committee appointments.
Very good. I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
All in favor?
Second, Mayor. Sorry?
Who'd you put down as a second?
Who was it?
America.
Alicia. All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Thank you for the new council members. Thank you for volunteering. We look forward to working with you. Let's go to committee reports, first with economic development with Gus.
Okay. Oops, turn the mic on. We met February 22nd. We did have a quorum. New thing is gonna try and get a local businessperson to come for a few minutes and speak. This particular case, Jeremy Dewitt from Model A came and spoke to us for quite a bit. Told us a lot about the team. It was a cool story. A group of friends who talked about it, and talked about it, and talked about it, and finally said, well, let's do it. And, you know, they put together a fine establishment, I think a great addition to our community. And Jeremy talked a lot about, you know, these are hometown people and a hometown establishment, and how much they want to, you know, continue to do things in the city, and also their commitment to the city and the community. And I think they showed that with their, Charlie's at gold level, I'm correct term for their sponsorship?
Presenting sponsor.
Presenting sponsor.
Yes.
Which has only been done once in the past. He would like to franchise. He's been helping out another business that's moving in next door to him, just because as the retail strategies people spoke about, one good business begets another, and they can trade off each other. So he's been helping Dale with his new venture, which is soon to open. Topper's is getting ready to open next door. They're very interested in something in Windhaven. And Charlie and Susan might make you happy to know that he was very complimentary of our business license and inspection process, and all of the staff at City Hall. So they made it very easy to do business, and he appreciated that. Talked about maybe trying to arrange a food truck rally at Baxter Vet for National Pet Day, which is in April, which will come up in a hurry, considering March is fast leaving us. Did discuss retail strategies coming to visit, which that was a good presentation. And they just made a suggestion that I'm sure is probably already being done, but Joey, conversation did come up about when Catawba Park does get open, for it to have its own separate online identity and website, as opposed to everything having to go through the city to reach it, that it might assist in booking events and things like that. Kind of made sense to me. And that was it. The next meeting will be next Monday, a week from today, March 22nd.
Any questions? Charlie, when do we, do we have any indication when Windhaven commercial might be starting being available? Nothing yet?
I mean, the properties are available for sale. My guess would be, once they get into some of the later phases on the residential, you know, phase three, phase four. They're still, phase one, correct?
They're getting ready with phase two.
Okay. So they're getting ready on phase two.
Eighteen, 24 months?
I'd say probably 24 months.
Just swag.
All right. Thank you. Next is planning commission with Alicia.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor and members of council. There were, there was a workshop on Monday, March 1st, where the planning commission talked about their three top priority items on the work plan. The first was their small area plans. They now have a timeline that they've established for their first small area plan, which is focused on a city center, which is within the Windhaven development. So very timely there. Staff and the Catawba Regional Council of Government will continue to update the planning commission and council, certainly as work proceeds. And I'd be happy to send any of that information over to council to review as well. They're currently planning, their current plan is that they'll complete the initial plan in late 2021. So hopefully we'll be able to see something by the end of this year. And going forward, they're thinking that they'll be able to complete a new small area plan within each fiscal year. Let's see, stormwater protections, that's something that we've had a lot of discussion about within this council. The planning commission has developed a list of potential actions with both pros and cons. That list will get finalized at their April meeting, and it will be ready for council consideration at our April meeting. And then lastly, the prioritization of the bike and pedestrian projects. So the planning commission has established a comprehensive list of potential projects from the comprehensive plan update, citizen survey, 2018 and 19, the bike pedestrian plan that the planning commission developed in 2019, and the RFATS regional bike plan, ped plan, developed in 2019. So they're usually using basically all of these tools to say, what did we hear? What was the feedback we received? And how do we use that to help inform us of what are all the projects out there? And then they'll be using that, or developing a scoring metric that they'll then use to evaluate each project and determine, from their point of view, what is the most important pedestrian or bike trail to recommend. And they'll go down the list from there. They are thinking that their initial prioritization should be completed in April as well. So the next steps from there would be to distribute that to city council and staff for feedback. And then, of course, adjust that prioritization list as necessary. Their next regular meeting scheduled for Monday, April 5th, at 6:30, right here in this room. And as always, I welcome you all to come and attend.
How many people attend?
Usually zero. Maybe one or two.
Okay. But the invitation is still open.
But the invitation's always open.
All right. Any questions or comments? All right. Let's move on to item six, which is new business. Oh, good. This is consideration approval of utility funds necessary to install a fire hydrant on Palmyra Drive. It came to the staff's attention that an additional fire hydrant needed to be installed on Palmyra Drive in order to provide better fire protection services for the homes in that area. We found out, unfortunately, by Bill Frazier's house burning down, that we needed a hydrant down there. So hopefully we get one put down there. Are there any questions or comments? Because it's pretty obvious. All right. Let's try for a motion.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the utility funds necessary to install a fire hydrant on Palmyra Drive.
Palmyra Drive. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No, nope. It's no no's. It's approved unanimously. So let's go to item 6B. Procurement ordinance.
All right. And it didn't go through? Okay. Is there any way to hook up over there? So that I can?
So this is a discussion only as recommended by council member dash, discussing regarding update on purchasing ordinance you've been working on for quite some time.
Okay. So I tried to get this over to Tim and Charlie just now, to pull up on the screen, but they're not able to get it. Would it be helpful still for me to go over there and present from inside there, so you guys can see?
Are we gonna get it here though?
No.
We don't have it yet.
Yeah. It's not going through. So I can hook up my computer and show you what we're looking at that way? Or do you want me to just talk through it?
What would you rather do?
I can go either way. Anyone have a preference? Do you want to see it?
Supervisional, gotta see it.
I'll just talk through it then. Okay. So basically, this conversation goes back, I think, over a year, where it came to our attention that our procurement policy needed some attention to rewrite it. We wanted more transparency, clearer guidelines for staff so that they had a better direction going forward and how to procure items throughout the city. So what we did is, working with Charlie and Bob, we took a look at, or actually, Charlie reached out to his listserv through the Municipal Association of South Carolina, and was able to get some data on other municipalities' procurement policies and their thresholds. We took a look at some of those policies, specifically looking at, what do we have here in York County? What do the other municipalities here have as their council thresholds, different requirements, things like that? And then compared that to the information within our current policy. One thing we also did was take a look at the Municipal Association of South Carolina's model ordinance. So they actually have an ordinance out there, a basic one that's about seven pages, and then an even more intense one that's like 27 or 26 pages long. Took a look at that to see what they were recommending, and then did some comparison. So basically, what I've done at this point is taken the recommended model ordinance from the Municipal Association of South Carolina, and then after reviewing the additional municipal procurement policies throughout our county and throughout our state, took what I thought were probably more best practices and applicable to the city and our purchasing requirements or standards from what Charlie has shared with me, to develop a draft ordinance for this council to consider. So I will just highlight a couple of the bigger points of the policy, or I guess more interesting elements of the policy. And then, of course, this is just a draft, a starting point. So I'd like to hear from council, of course. What do you like about it? What don't you like about it? What's missing? What, you know, what, how do we rephrase things? Because this is a, you know, an important document to help us do pretty much anything where we need resources. So that being said, and again, I apologize that this is, we couldn't get this up for you. But starting from the beginning, added a couple pieces of information just at the very beginning regarding the purpose, you know, really focused on fair and equitable treatment of all people involved in public purchasing for the city of Tugak. Application, so how this policy in itself applies to procurement of supply services and construction. And that it doesn't really matter, and I'm paraphrasing for you, but it doesn't really matter, the funding source that's used, the policy still applies. And then a public access to procurement information. So just reinstating the Freedom of Information Act as something that's important for us, and noting that a requirement for bidders to specifically have to mark things as confidential if those are not able to be shared under that law. Within the next section of the draft ordinance, we included a section on state ethics policy so that anything, all actions involving procurement for the city, would, the State Ethics Act would also apply to those decisions and actions. Further, going down on the policy, under a section on purchasing agent and specified duties, it basically outlines the city managers or the procurement agent, their responsibilities for purchasing. One thing additional I added, there was a section on soliciting and maintaining up-to-date list of qualified contractors, vendors, et cetera. Added that the solicitation must be posted for at least 15 business days at a minimum, and published on the city's website, city's Facebook account, city's weekly newsletter, and the South Carolina Business Opportunities publication. And the theory behind that was really, as I was looking at these ordinances and seeing how long that they had requirements for publication of, for solicitation, a lot of them were like five days and seven days. However, I recall from our conversation with Charlie about a year and a half ago, I think, it sounded like standard practice for the city was around a month. So it felt right to do a 15 days. But of course, welcome your all's input on that. If it needs to increase or decrease, certainly open to your feedback there. And then, one of the things we wanted to highlight too, or write in the policy, is specifically where we'd like to see the solicitation published. And so, of course, we've had our standard city website, but we also wanted to utilize the South Carolina Business Opportunities publication. But then, from a transparency standpoint, we know that a lot of our residents here in Tugak are often on social media, don't necessarily go to our website. So this is just another opportunity to show that transparency, let people know what we're doing. So we could always solicit through that. And if anything, it's, hey, we're about to do, it's almost letting them know what's about to happen based on what we're, what's going on, or what we're trying to procure. And then, of course, our city newsletter, which I think is a great resource that our city has. They send it out weekly, adding a section there that could also highlight what opportunities there are within the city. All right. Let's see. So approval authority, the purchasing agent, which is also identified as the city manager, they would have the authority to approve contracts up to $24,999 with prior budget approval, and then contracts that are, or purchases that are at or estimated to be $25,000 or greater, would then go to city council. This is the same threshold that we had before. So it was a $25,000 threshold for contracts going to city council, I believe. So this is where it gets a little bit more detailed than what we have had before in our prior policies. So there's a formal contract procedure section, which really is the meat of the ordinance, and gives a lot more detail in terms of thresholds and requirements. Specifically, all supplies and services, when the estimated cost exceeds $10,000, and just think of that $10,000 as whatever number this body wants. Basically, once it hits that threshold, that's when our purchases shall go through a formal written contract form with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, after notice of RFP or proposal. It requires a minimum of three written quotes or responses to be obtained. And then no contract or purchase shall be subdivided to avoid the requirements of the section, which is standard pretty much in a lot of them. So you can't say, I gotta purchase pencils, but this time I'm purchasing $5,000, next time I'm purchasing $5,000, next time I'm purchasing $5,000. It's an aggregate. So you can't divide up that contract to get around that. Let's see. From a bidding perspective, for purchases or contracts not exceeding $5,000, oral bids may be accepted. All other bids should be in writing and require a minimum of three quotes. And competitive bidding, of course, is encouraged. And then, of course, the city manager does have the authority to- And then, of course, the city manager does have the authority to spend outside of those thresholds should there be an emergency situation, and they also have to file a report with city council and within city hall within thirty days. Okay, so, the next one, awarding to the lowest bidder. So this specific section of the ordinance recommends that when contracts for city improvements, material, equipment, or services, so, I think a lot of this is gonna fall within the construction area. Anything that's costing more than twenty-five thousand dollars shall be awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder after public notice of at least fifteen days before the last day set for receipt of the proposal. Again, this just gets at that threshold requiring the minimal, sorry, the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold, and the acceptance or the award to the lowest bidder. It also specifies, again, the same four different resources to publicly advertise the solicitation and make sure that it's known throughout the community to provide opportunities for folks. So one point of discussion I wanted to see is if there, if in this point we do say, or the wording of the current ordinance says, it shall be awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And I'm curious if the interpretation, and perhaps Bob might know this too, the interpretation for responsive, if the request for proposal were to specify some sort of benefit or objective that scores a business that is a local business, a minority-owned business, woman-owned business, has green, you know, practices green, whatever it is, environmental considerations, does, do we have to specifically specify that? Or, sorry, in the ordinance, or because we're saying lowest responsive, if we specify that in the actual RFP, then that would provide us with an opportunity to pick someone who might not be the lowest bidder, but might fit one of those categories that we are encouraging? I hope that made sense.
I think there are a lot of definitions of responsive. I don't think it is defined in our current ordinance or the model ordinance, so you could try to define it, but by defining it, you give yourself less leeway. So, I can look at it, Ms. Dash, and see if someone else has defined it, I've never seen it defined.
Okay. And I guess then, going back to council, is that something that you would want to specifically define in the ordinance? Or you would want it to be defined in more of like the request for qualifications or...
I'd like to read the whole thing and kind of get a better feel of it. When is this gonna be available to us, right away?
Yeah, I mean, at any point. I guess the point is, are you interested in having some language in the ordinance itself? Are you supportive of language being added into the ordinance itself that calls out the local minority, women-owned, environmental, et cetera?
I think to Bob's point, it kind of pigeonholes us a little bit, especially on, say, a larger project. Obviously, we would love to, you know, give as many projects as we can to somebody who's fitting those, you know, veteran-owned, you know, anything to those categories, but if we were to leave somebody out, for example, that, then it could get a little tricky. But I think, you know, if other cities are listing them in their RFPs that were, you know, wanna give credence to those particular types of businesses, and that might be the better place to do it, I don't know, just my opinion.
The other thing you gotta be concerned about is being discriminatory. You as a city have to be very even-handed, you can't be arbitrary or capricious in the way you award something.
Yes, I would, I think everybody should have an equal opportunity. I mean, but if we start limiting it to certain ways, it might even make the project more expensive for the city, or, I mean, everybody should have an equal opportunity to do whatever they want in the city. We shouldn't say, this group gets a preferential treatment versus this group. So that's the way I would feel, but...
When I always tend to lean towards, because you know, we compete with the national guys all the time, and lowest price isn't always necessarily the best quality that you receive, and you guys have much more experience from a municipality perspective, but, you know, today I did a bid for Montgomery County, Maryland Police Department for their document shredding and storage. And they had it graded where twenty-five percent was based on price, twenty-five percent was based on history and quality of service, twenty-five, like, they had it defined on, it's not just the lowest bidder, that you get graded on the full RFP that you submit, and then they make their decision that way. So, I don't know if that further complicates things, but just an example.
I think simply by saying responsible, it gives us the ability to go with somebody, should we, that's not necessarily the lowest bidder based on other qualifications.
And you could go on record during the consideration, the public consideration, you could go on record as to why you find it most responsive without pigeonholing.
I mean, we all do that every day, lowest bidder stuff, we go out to eat dinner, we don't necessarily go to McDonald's when we go to someplace nice. That's, we just want, you know, we don't wanna cut ourselves short with something just because it's cheap. But, yeah, I can't, are we gonna have what's proposed and what used to be? Is there like a red line through, and that kind of thing, that we can see what it used to be?
I completely started from scratch with the model ordinance, but the prior ordinance is available on Unicode, is it? Or did I pull it up on?
The very brief version that we have now that was modeled after the state and municipal ordinance was, is what's on Unicode right now.
But what I did, and what you'll see once you get a copy of this, is I took the model ordinance and then redlined any changes. Anytime I strayed from what was in the model ordinance, you'll actually see that as an edit of redline. So you'll be able to tell exactly what was changed or whatnot.
I mean, real quick, I mean, I would just like to reiterate that I'm concerned with any provision that mentions almost having to accept the lowest bidder because that's not always the best bid. And also, the other thing, and I'm sure Charlie can speak to this as well, I think there should be some sort of provision if you can't get three bids. There are plenty of projects out there right now that you can't get three people to bid on it, and you're putting it in an ordinance that we have to have at least three.
That was my question, what happens if we don't?
Yeah, so, there's a couple of things that could potentially answer that, but I didn't specify what happens if we don't. So that's something that, if we wanna change or add some more clarification to, we certainly can. In addition, you can reject the lowest bid in this, the way that the policy is written, you just have to provide a statement for the reasons why it made sense for going with someone else rather than the lowest bidder. There's also provisions for ties, that's, these are all new additional things that we didn't have in our last ordinance that will state, like specifically what you do when you're evaluating if there's a tie. And, what was the other thing you said? Oh, then, so, there's a number of bids received, and then, yeah, rejecting, you can reject the lowest bidder. So there is language in here to allow for that.
I mean, I think it's as simple as we take what you did, we all look through it, obviously, give our two cents. Old ordinance, new ordinance, here attorneys that do this for a living, could you ensure we're protected?
Can I remind you, can I remind you of where you left off with this about a year, year and a half ago? So, purchase ordinance became hot item. Charlie and I went back to the drawing boards, which was, I went back to the model ordinance, which has been around for some decades. Your ordinance has been around for decades too, it was really when it was a very small city and it's never been reworked. So we went back to the model ordinance, then I called a couple of attorneys with the city of Rock Hill, and was reminded by them that they had put over the experience of over a hundred years into it, and they had worked the model ordinance into the city of Rock Hill's ordinance. So then Charlie and I then took that ordinance, city of Rock Hill, and tweaked it best we could to get to some of the salient points in your old ordinance, and then I sent a red line, and in that red line, I asked you in several instances, what decision you wanted to make. For example, what did you want to do if there was just one bid? Did you want to come to council? Did you want to give the authority to purchasing agent to determine it was a sole source? Those sort of things. So that's where, and the reason I'm mentioning it is because if you look back, I don't, you're gonna get confused, I think, if you get all these in front of you. You have a very old ordinance, you have an ordinance that's based on the city of Rock Hills, and now you have a third one. So, I just want, I want you to make sure you know what you're looking at when you get all those different versions in front of you.
Yeah, and that was, thank you for mentioning that, Bob. Sole source is one of the additional provisions that was added into it, in addition to change orders and modifications, some direction there. Also protest for solicitations, and opportunity for folks to do that. And that pretty much wraps up the special things that were added based on the model ordinance.
Any other questions?
No, I have one quick question. Thanks for taking the time to do that and meeting, you know, with Charlie and Bob and going through all of it. Under, you had restated that the purchasing agent responsibility is a solicitation must be posted for publication for fifteen days at a minimum. Is that for all bids, or because it's listed as a purchasing agent, that's just those over the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold?
Let me go back up to that part. I believe I did put it in both sections, so it would be for all bids.
Okay.
And then, again, that number could change, or if we want it to be different for the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold, maybe it needs to be posted longer or whatnot, we could certainly explore that.
Okay, and then the only other question slash concern that I had, and I don't know how much of our purchases are over the ten thousand threshold mark, and who would be responsible for that? I would assume it would be at the department head level, is it a ten thousand, or does it still need to come through? As of right now, I guess, is the question, is...
So Charlie, we talked about this.
It's not specified, okay.
Well, hold on, we did talk about the number of, or the percentage of purchases within each of those categories.
Right, I don't know what's in the draft that's being discussed, I've not seen that at all. I can pull up that information, give me one moment.
That's, I mean, it's not, doesn't have to be that specific, we don't have to take the time to do that right now. I just, I wanna make sure that we're not hindering too much too. You know, if the majority of our purchases are over ten thousand dollars, then yes, we definitely wanna have checks and balances in place, but we also, you know, if it's something that we need today...
Two percent of our purchases are between two thousand and five thousand dollars. Eighty-six percent of our purchases are less than five hundred dollars. Twelve percent are between five hundred dollars and two thousand dollars.
Okay, so that...
So we did look.
That makes sense, okay.
We did talk about that, okay. But, yeah. So we'll get these out, I'll get this out tonight, and you all can, unless you have any other changes you want me to make right now.
No, I think once we see them, we'll have plenty of things to comment about, and then we wanna just leave it open until when we should make a decision on this. Do you wanna give us a thirty day, anybody wanna say thirty days?
You just bring it back for first reading in April, that way we have a month to get back and put it together?
Everybody think they can do this in a month? Anybody who can't do it in a month?
Right now, it is eight pages.
Okay, yeah, I can handle that, yeah.
And what was the old one?
The one that I sent to council in 2019 was about twenty-something pages. I think the current model is about six pages.
That was the one that had the Rock Hill one.
Correct.
Yeah, I think I still have that red line one, so, okay. Well, if anybody needs more time, I mean, this is, we're happy to take another month, it's, we've gone this long, we can make sure we do it right, gotta do it right. Okay, thank you, thank you, Alicia.
And you guys didn't think it was gonna be exciting tonight?
Look at Walt, he's just, he's taking notes. Alright, let's move on to item, where are we at, six C? Introduction of first reading of an ordinance to amend ordinance five five six as it relates to the fiscal year 2020, 2021 Parks and Rec fee schedule. During the planning, during the budget planning for the current fiscal year, council determined it was important to have a part-time staff monitoring Windjammer Park. To help defray the cost of this new position, a fee was established for the use of the river access area. Staff is now recommending that we eliminate the user fee at the river access due primarily to the cost of getting electricity to the site for the additional staff to charge a fee. And then we have several of the fees listed here, is there any significant change here?
The only change is the elimination of that proposed fee. If council will recall, at your last meeting, I discussed Duke came back with heartburn over the per-vehicle fee, wanted us to do a per-person fee. As we were preparing for the summer out there, met with York Electric, who came back with a thirteen thousand and change fee to just get power for, to a hut for this guard shack. We have, with some staff changeovers, things like that, we've been able to identify some funds in the budget to be able to cover the park attendants at Windjammer. If council were called during the budget conversations, this park attendant was strictly to try to raise the funds to cover that position. Now that we've been able to find a different way of doing that, the other issue we have, council, so please spread the word, especially those playing along at home, we've only got one, one application, one part-time application. We've done job fairs with school district, we've hit Winthrop University, York Tech, online, social media. People don't want to be...
Joey, do they need to send it to you?
It's just online, it's online.
But there's, when I pull it up on the HR, it just gives you like a PDF, there's nowhere to like click to like submit your resume or anything.
Yeah, the online form, it's not a PDF, it's the actual form, you fill it in online and clicks in. And it will come, it will come right in, enjoy, get it.
Okay, gotcha, alright.
So we need people, otherwise, we'll, we will put this out for staff overtime, various maintenance, whatnot. We will staff Windjammer, as was discussed, every weekend, Saturdays and Sundays, eleven to six. We prefer to do it with part-time seasonal staff versus full-time employees that are working overtime, but I think we're gonna end up with more issues charging with it being brand-new. We may have eliminated the problem, think, well, Duke may have helped us eliminate that problem that we were experiencing last year, even with a guard attendant, whatever, at the river access. It's not gonna decrease the amount of patrols PD's gonna have to do down there regardless. So we, we're asking council to, let's remove that fee, let the river access do its thing and not spend...
So that's really the thing that's changing on this?
It's just eliminating that river access fee is all this is, sir.
Alright, how about a motion, let's get this one, this is easy.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend ordinance five five six as it relates to fiscal year 2020 through 2021 Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule.
I have motion, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Alicia Dash. Are there any final questions or comments before we vote? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, it's unanimous, let's go to six.
And again, Mayor, if anybody knows anybody sixteen years and older that's looking...
I put it on the moms page, and like twelve moms were like, I'm gonna send my sixteen-year-old over there.
Twelve bucks an hour to just make sure people have parking passes and, you know, check on the trash cans, so.
Alright.
Please, please, please apply.
Ryan, you want Saturday or Sunday?
What's overtime for a council member, like thirteen, thirteen cents an hour or so?
Probably, if you take that, we're two to a half, yes.
Double time, carry the one, yeah. Still not worth it. Alright, item six D is the introduction of first reading of an ordinance authorized the execution and delivery of documents relating to the provision of municipal facilities consenting to and approving the issuance of TOK Public Facilities installment purchase revenue bond series 2021 by TOK Public Facilities Corporation to provide funding to finance the cost of acquiring, constructing, equipment, and installing municipal facilities, Kataba Park. This is the first reading of an ordinance for the funding of phases one and two of Kataba Park. This is a momentous occasion, as it will allow us to break ground on Kataba Park in June of this year, and with hopes of opening it to the public by fall of 2022. And this is momentous, this is, this is a big deal we've been talking about for so, two thousand, I was gonna say at least fifteen years, sixteen years. And we were always talking about doing it in phases, a little bit of phase one, a little bit of phase two, a little bit of phase three, and I think the impact fees has made it where we can do this. Impact fees are gonna pay forty percent of this, is what we talked about last time. So it's like having forty percent off what we originally thought was... So, it's like having 40% off what we originally thought was going to, was going to cost us. And that's kind of why we were able to do two phases at one time, plus the incredibly cheap interest rates, where the cost of money is, is really is 2.5, there, thereabouts percent? I mean, just under that, so, it's almost like you can't. Yeah, we'll know tomorrow. So, we've been talking about this a long time. I can't believe I'm actually sitting on council when we get to do it. So, it's been a long process. So, who wants the pleasure of making this motion?
Me.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of documents relating to the provision of municipal facilities, consenting to and approving the issuance of TAK Public Facilities Installment Purchase Revenue Bond Series 2021 by TAK Public Facilities Corporation to provide funding to finance the costs of acquiring construction, equipment, and installing municipal facilities, Kataba Park.
Second.
And Alicia jumps on the second. Any other comments or questions? This is a big thing.
Third.
Third, fourth. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unbelievable, it's unanimous. This is going to be a big thing. This is, we've been talking about this, I can't, I can't express that. I'm how excited I am. That's really something. Let's go to six E. Always fun stuff here, road acceptance. This is a consideration of road acceptance easements and infrastructure detailed in the title to real estate as presented and contained in Cameron Creek Phases five and nine. The developer for Cameron Creek did submit and request to the city to accept the roads, easements, and infrastructure contained within Cameron Creek Phases five and nine. The roads and infrastructure have been inspected by city staff and engineers and have been found to meet city standards. Our attorney has reviewed and approved the title to real estate and deed affidavits, release of liens related to this request. Is this it for Cameron Creek now? Is there one more? They're still building over there, huh?
Pretty much done.
Good. All right, do I have a motion?
Mayor, members of council, motion to accept the roads, easements, and infrastructure as detailed in the title to real estate and deed as presented and contained within Cameron Creek Phases five and nine.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Are there any final questions or comments before we vote? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, everything's been unanimous tonight. All right, let's go to item seven, which is the city manager's report. Charlie Fundaburk.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Rock Hill, City of Rock Hill has informed us that they are proposing a 3% increase on the sewer charges for the coming year. I'm anticipating bringing proposed increase for your consideration at your June council meeting. They are not proposing an increase to the water rate this coming year. So, as they are going through their budgetary process and are able to move that forward, then we'll, and we've got a better handle on what that actual rate will be, then we'll bring that for council for discussion. The American Rescue Plan was signed into law last week, as I'm sure everyone saw. As part of that $1.9 trillion emergency relief bill, $65.1 billion will go to municipal governments. I will be working with the Municipal Association, ICMA, on exactly what we can spend on our allotment. MSC's, or MASC's prediction is, it's going to be approximately $4.23 million coming to TAK over the next year. They are somewhat specifically vague on how you get to spend that money. So, process that statement for a second. The legislation is very specifically vague on that. So, we'll be working through that. The first allotment is expected sometime probably in early May. The second allotment by law has to be distributed within 12 months after that, and we have until 2024 to spend it. The only clear part of it is we can invest it into water and sewer projects and broadband. There are three other categories that are as clear as mud on how you can spend it. So, we'll be working through that, and we'll bring options back for council once we know what they are. So, stay tuned, we might be able to do some really great things. Or not. I just don't know at this point, based on the way the law was written. Bids are due back from banks for Kataba Park tomorrow. We have a conference call scheduled with our financial advisors based on the pre-bid meeting held last week. I'm pleased to say it looks like we would have anywhere between six and 10 potential contractors bidding on the project. I had a full room in here last week. So, excited about that, excited to see what the banks come back with tomorrow. At my discretion, or excuse me, at my direction, Susan Britt and Tim Gillette are working with SEDOT and city engineers on an application for CMAC funds through RFATs. Those that aren't familiar with the alphabet soup from DOT, CMAC is congestion mitigation air quality funds. We use those for trails in Lakewood. We use those to buy Priuses and alternative fuel vehicles many years ago. We are looking at a potential multi-use trail from Stratford Run Drive, which is on New Gray Rock Road at the River District of Baxter, all the way down New Gray Rock Road to Kataba Park. RFATs has recently announced that there was approximately $2 million in CMAC funds available. Right now, it looks like we're the only ones talking to DOT about those funds. So, now the downside comes with a 20% match. So, working through what that pre-designed estimate cost and application process is, I appreciate Susan and Tim's hard work on, on getting that application in by the April 9th deadline. And then June 11th, they've got to, we'll have to work through, by June 11th, work through an air quality benefit analysis. But could be, could be pretty, pretty impactful, pretty big for certain. So, we'll, we'll see where that goes. But we wanted to alert council that we are working through that. Obviously, before we do any, if we are, looks like we are getting it, we'll make sure that council is aware and approves the necessary matching funds before we sign on the dotted line, so to speak. So, that concludes my report for this evening, Mayor.
I get asked all the time about why do we buy water and sewage through Rock Hill? And we've even spoke with, we had a kind of informal meeting with Fort Mill about starting our own, what would it take to do all that? I think somebody came out with a number, about 250 million, and you divide that by how many people live in TAK and, and Fort Mill, and we're getting a pretty good deal on water and sewer compared if we did it by ourselves. Phil's out there nodding, he knows how expensive that is. It's, so, we're always at the mercy of Rock Hill to be as, you know, whatever they can do to cut us a break, but, you know, I'm sure they got fees and expenses. But so, everybody, whoever asks, let's just build our own, it's.
One, one important thing with the contracts is they can't charge us any more than they're charging their own residents. So, whenever they are increasing to us, whatever the rate we're paying to them, it's the same thing that, you know, their, their own residents are paying. So, yeah, I mean, that, I always have to remind folks on that when they, when they, obviously, nobody likes a rate increase. I guarantee you the citizens of Rock Hill don't either. But we're not taking an increase when they're not. So, that, that is a, a nice saving grace, if you will.
We'll get that, get the word out, so we don't, we're not surprising anybody, you know, whenever, however we can get that news of a 3% rate increase on sewage. Yeah, the moms always have a comment about it. All right, thank you. Is there any more comments for Charlie before we start? Council comments, okay? No, okay, Ryan, you can go first for council comments. Alicia?
Good.
I have just a couple. I'll go fast. I want to say congratulations to our new committee members and those who are returning. Thank you for your service. We really appreciate all of your hard work. I know that it's often a thankless job, but your contributions to our community and all that we do are, are really, we thank you, so. Spring sports start, have started, but officially games start next weekend. So, we are excited, some of games have already started, but we are excited to kick that off with, with spring sports. I'm excited about Kataba Park, so we are finally moving forward. It's no longer a pipe dream, but it is actually happening, so that's exciting. And then I met with Lakewood HOA, I did city updates for their HOA meeting last week, and I mentioned the CMAC funds, and I told them, you know, don't hold your breath or anything, but it's a possibility, and they were very excited about that. So, hopefully, we can do some stuff on that side of town for, for all those folks pretty soon. That's it.
Thanks, Gus, do you have anything?
It's really easy, just, congratulations to those who volunteered and were accepted to serve on the committees.